And you used to be a video. You're a video guy this time. I'm learning.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. My name is Furman Fad. My president is the school board.
Yolanda Smith, vice president.
And then my secretary.
Michael Moore, president.
Mr. Wood, board trustee.
Rand Williams, trustee.
Gerald Buchanan, trustee.
We welcome you all and we welcome our special guest this evening. Mrs. Demetria Taylor and the Delta Sigma Theta sorority are here celebrating Delta Day. Ms. Demetria Taylor? Oh, there you are. Hi. Welcome to our board meeting. Will your members please stand? Do you have members with you? The sorority, their custom education for women and healthy women who are in college. That's what they do. Principal Paula Lightsea from Thompson, K.A., International Academy is here with students who have won awards in the Optimist Club's oratorical contest and the Battle of the Books contest and the Optimist Club Essay Contest. Please welcome Mrs. Lightsea and the Thompson K-28 students.
Good evening, Southfield Public School Board members, Southfield Public School community guests, and Southfield community. If any of my students are here, please stand up. We should have filled the room. We're just elated with our success this year. And we were able to accomplish several things. Our Battle of the Books team, we had 11 teams. Out of 11 teams, we placed second, third, fourth, and sixth. We had four sixth grade teams. They had a Battle of the Books sleepover. They played human concentration. And you guys had a scavenger hunt. It was a great evening for them. Then, we placed first with the Optimist Essay Contest. Sixth grade student Erin Davis won first place. And not that I'm bragging, but the competition was with tough grades. She won over tough grades. And then finally, the Optimist Oratorical Contest. Kennedy Davis, first place winner, Derek Croxton, second place winner, and Skylar Haygood had intended to be here, but they had an emergency. They placed first, second, and third. So we're very, very proud of our accomplishments this year. We always talk about raising kids to be intellects and then athletes. I'm just going to make sure. Thank you. I just want to thank you guys for the support. I know that Southfield stands for excellence and we're pushing forward, so thank you.
Molly McNeese from the Southfield Regional Academic Campus is here with students who have won awards for a national video contest and the Michigan Arson Awareness Poster Contest. Please welcome Ms. McNeese and students from the Southfield Regional Academic Campus.
Good evening. Again, my name is Molly McNeese and I'm here with my colleague, our wonderful, wonderful gym teacher and Ms. Kathy Fuller. And I'm here with some of my students who are going to receive their awards tonight. The award is for the National Alternative Education Association. We received first place nationally against every alternative high school in the nation. I often use "alternative" things for my extra credit contest. And I love contests and I especially love art contests. But this video contest, we've submitted year after year and never had any bites. And my fifth hour class decided to join up with Ms. Fuller's fifth hour gym class. And we got together because we would write the script, we put together the storyboard, they put together costumes, makeup, and it was five weeks of hard, hard work. And every time the kids would say, "Why are we doing this? We're never going to win. We should just chuck it in the garbage and do something else." And I said, "No, we have to continue and push on." And we submitted and every day, "Do we hear? Do we win? Better call the woman up, because I know we won." So I am very, very excited. We were honored in Atlanta, Georgia at their national convention at the end of March. We were now, we are now currently on display on the National Alternative Education Association's website. It's posted there, so you can see the video. It's about zombies. And the movie title is Zombie Attack. And the theme of the movie is Full Theme Ahead. So my students show how when things attack us like laziness or homelessness or skipping class, those things are not going to distract us. We're going to do the work and fight off the zombies that way and graduate. So I am here to thank the Southfield Public Schools for supporting all the arts, especially in video production. And we have big plans next year and this year also to beef up our video production. And I do have a student who's going to go to school to be a movie director, so I'm very excited. My two students that are here are Otis Evans and Charles Tillman. The students not only won the national recognition, but received $400. He's poor, waiting for his place. And that had to be split up, so. The second thing I am so very honored to speak about tonight is Khalil. He was the student behind me. Khalil is a junior at our school. Ms. Fuller and I both have him. And we are so very proud of his accomplishment. Khalil entered the Michigan Statewide Arson Awareness Poster Contest. Not because he needed the extra credit, not just because we wanted him to do it. And he and his brother entered and Khalil won first place in the state poster contest. Khalil was honored last Tuesday in Ann Arbor at the Weber Inn and where he received his $250 cash prize for his artwork. So again, we thank you for the support of the arts, because our students not only are learning so much about art history and the principles and elements of design, but you can also see from our artwork around representing Southfield Public Schools that it is turning into careers and a little extra cash on the side. I certainly appreciate it. So thank you very much. One last thing. I do have parents from the Southfield Regional Academic Campus. If my parents could wave and stand up.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you, and thank you, Ms. McNeese. Mr. Antonio King and Mr. Doug Kalanowski are Durham Transportation employees who have been recognized for their outstanding service to our students and school districts. They both received the 2014 Excellence in Transportation Award from Open County. Please welcome Mr. King and Mr. Kalanowski.
Antonio King found a boy running away from school back when it was nine below zero and about 30 below at the wind chill. And he called in the dispatch. We brought the child back home. He was very upset. Antonio calmed him down. We called administration. We found his uncle and everything was fine. But it could have ended a lot differently though. And Antonio was recognized not only by his peers in Southfield, but by Durham School Services. He was sent to Las Vegas to meet with the CEO of the company and he had a really good time. Still recovering from that. And then Doug Kalanowski is new to Durham and he's just been a pleasure to have for this last year. He is interested in the students. He'll do anything for his fellow workers. And he was recognized by his peers. And we're just really proud to have him and we're proud to be serving Southfield community. So thank you very much. And I don't know if we're going to talk or not.
Ms. Joan Newberry has earned a Senior Professional Human Resources Certification from the Society of Human Resource Management and the Human Resource Certification Institute. Please congratulate Ms. Newberry.
Thank you. It was a lot of hard work. It took about a year. It took about a year to do it, but the test, I finally took it. It was 178 multiple choice questions. And you had, I think, three hours to finish it, so. And then at the end, it tells you if you passed or not.
Well, I guess you did. The Honorable Mayor Brenda Lawrence is here to present special awards to our school. Are you here? Well, who won the contest for the Chief Southfield Clean Initiative? I would welcome her.
She's on her way.
She's on her way. All right. We will welcome her when you get here. Board trustees Rand Williams, Betty Robinson, and Yolanda Smith interviewed 11 students who applied for the position of student board representative for the 2014 VCU school year. The following four students were selected and will attend regular board meetings to represent their schools beginning in September. Shayna Hodge, Southfield Regional Academic Campus. Brianna Richardson, Southfield Waverford High School. Aries, I think it's Aries, is it Aries? Aries Rutledge, University High School Academy. And Lauren Williams, Southfield High School. Special thanks to our current student board representatives for their wonderful service. They are here tonight. We will begin with Ms. Kennedy Armstrong, Southfield Regional Academic Campus.
Good evening, board members. Dr. Wood, Director of Staff and Administrators, Southfield Public School staff, parents, students, and guests. My name is Kennedy Armstrong and I am a student and board member for Southfield Regional Academic Campus. April 11th through 13th, 10 Southfield Regional Academic Campus students, artists showcased pottery, drawing, sculptures, photography, paintings, and jewelry at the 2014 Great Lakes Art Fair at the Suburban Collection Show in Novi under Mrs. Molly McNeese's art program. Khalil Hughes placed first in the high school category of the Michigan Arson Prevention Committee and the Michigan chapter of the International Association of Arson Awareness Poster Contest. Due to Khalil Hughes' talent, Ms. McNeese's art department received an award of $205. April 4th, Ms. Tiffany Johnson and 10 seniors participated in the 34th Annual Youth and Government Day event in Pontiac, Michigan. Mrs. Stark, Mrs. Gales, and Mrs. Tensman sponsored on May 1st, the Sisters Supporting Sisters Second Annual Conference held at U of M Dearborn campus for all Southfield Regional Academic Campus seniors. This year's theme was believing in something. On May 8th, 43 students from the graduated class of 2015 went on a field trip to the Mosaic Youth Theater with Mrs. Nelson and Mrs. Ethel Johnson. Today, Mrs. Gales and Chacrone are Women of Tomorrow girls to a workshop showcase, Women Working in Corporate America. On behalf of Mr. Bolger and Mrs. Stark, I would like to invite you to Southfield Regional Academic Campus's Fourth Annual Senior Brunch on May 16th from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at St. John's Bakery. Have a good evening and thanks for your time.
Mr. David Cole of Southfield High School.
Hello to the Board of Education, Superintendent, Administrators, and Community Members. I'm David Cole and here's a blue day report. On May 7th, Southfield held the Honors Program for 9th and 10th Grades at 8:00 a.m. in the Southfield Auditorium. 95 students were honored for achieving GPAs above a 3.25. In the afternoon, our juniors and seniors were honored. The auditorium was packed to honor 192 students. Some of the highlights were the announcement of the Dave Wheeling Award, Ink Motor Award, and the Princeton Award. The program honored students with exceptional thoracic achievements in core subjects. Also, the seniors received $3 million in academic scholarships, $1.8 million in band scholarships, and over $14 million in athletic scholarships. On Thursday, May 15th, Southfield will hold its final Honor Roll social for all students with 3.0 GPAs or higher for fifth year. There are over 250 students still on the Honor Roll to close out the year. Also, on May 15th, the senior class will have a presentation on prime night safety and saying no to drinking and driving. On May 2nd, the Southfield baseball team beat rival Southfield Lakers at home. And on May 8th, the Blue Jay Track Team, boys, competed in the OAA White League Track Meet. The Blue Jays placed third with championship performances by Ray Buford, Matt Falcone, Devin Foul, Walter Love, Javon Gaddy, and a host of other place winners. The Lady J softball team swept cross-town rivals, Southfield Lakers, in a doubleheader after the last board meeting. Also, the Lady J Track Team also participated in the OAA Championship on May 8th, putting in great effort with many place winners on the day. Our senior prom will be held on May 27th at the Detroit Marriott from 6:00 p.m. to midnight. Also, seniors will graduate on June 1st at Shane Park at 4:00 p.m. Thank you for this wonderful opportunity to represent my school through Board of Education. Let's go Southfield, Blue Jays Tour.
University High School.
Good evening, everyone. So last month, at the time of the last board meeting, our school had their, I guess, trip, school trip, which happens every four years, and we went to Europe. We were touring Madrid and Paris. There were 54 of us from UHSA U Prep along with parents of those students. And went to the Eiffel Tower, Toledo, Versailles, and lots of other places. So now it's a report. NJHS, which is National Junior Honor Society, had their first induction for U Prep eighth graders on April 23rd. Our school's fine arts extravaganza, where artwork by UHSA students were featured and UHSA jazz bands performed, took place on May 1st. Last Wednesday was our passing of the mace ceremony, where the 2015 class, which is the next rec. class, officially became the senior class, and the 2014 class, which is the next rec. class, reminisced and gave advice to the upcoming seniors. Also, last week was Teacher Appreciation Week. So I'd like to say thank you to all educators in the district. You're all fantastic. Thank you so much. So AP testing started. This year, we have 79 students taking a total of 100 AP exams over eight different subjects. This week is senior spirit week, and yesterday's dress was blackout, today's dress is professional. Wednesday is college, Thursday is whiteout, and Friday is senior jersey day. Of our 62 senior graduates, 50 are attending a four-year college, three are attending a two-year college, and one is attending a fifth year. Due to progress that's happening with book drive for new or gently-used books, and NHFS is also having clothing drive for teenage, where they collect teenage, um, girls clothing from 14 to 21 years of age, and boys clothing from 14 to 21 years of age for the Vidmaria, which is a, it's, sorry, sorry. I don't want to say community service, but it's like, they take them home for adverse females and males of 14, 21 years of age. And then lastly, U Prep is going to New York, May 20th and 22nd for their eighth grade trip. And that is it for this month. Thank you for your time. It's been a blast.
I know this is going to be, uh, this is going to be your last time here, because you'll be graduating this time next month. So where are you headed next year?
I'm going to U of L.
So this is your last time with us. Well, so where are you going next year?
I want to attend University of Michigan.
Okay.
I want to be at physical therapy and I'm probably going to take, um, some type of master's degree. And for now, I'm going to have to be in-person training. And also, I'm going to be a forward wall for baseball.
Okay. You're coming back next year, but I know much in the future, so you can just kind of share that with everybody, too.
I want to attend Lawrence Technological University for Media and Communication, because one day I will have my own pop show.
Thank you for being, uh, thank you for being with us these past couple of years. You've really been an outstanding representative for SREC. So I'll miss you next year, but I'll be around, I'll see you. Take care.
Thank you very much. That report of the principal student. Okay, well, thank you. And I'm just going to build a little tradition, again, thank all of our student representatives, because you have a tremendous job and you're always grateful. And I know that this may be the last board meeting for a school of you. And so if you will be here for the June board meeting, I'd like for you to make sure before you leave that you slip Ms. Nicole Kristen a little note, so that she knows she'll be here. Okay. Well, I'm going to start my report and I will share with you that we may have a few little interruptions, pleasant ones, as we await for some additional parts of my presentation. This will be the mayor, and she will be here very shortly. But I have to start by saying, as I look around this room, I see the JWE Gallery of Art. And we have so many beautiful displays of artwork here in our board room. And I invite our community, I invite our parents to come by and just, on a moment, stop in and look at the tremendous work and display of learning and teaching that has occurred in our district. And I want to thank our art teachers. And if they are here, I'd like for them to stand up. Julie Wolf from Vandenberg, okay, Julie Wolf from Vandenberg. Lisa Herman from Levy. And then Molly McNeese, is she still here?
Okay, well, you've met Molly McNeese already. From Southfield Regional Academic Campus. From Grace Letterly. Melissa Jimbinsky from Bernie. And Doug Pacini from Southfield High School.
Uh, I'm, yeah, Sharon Miller. Sharon Miller from Vandenberg.
Sharon Miller from Vandenberg.
And then you do a terrific job extracting that creative spirit from our children and actually causing it to be demonstrated in the beautiful artifacts that we see in our rooms today. I appreciate it and value it. Lisa, you'd like to share?
There are some students here also that have come down, um, just to the house.
Okay, if you'd like. And would you like to bring them to the podium, so that they can share a little bit about their artwork? If you'd like.
Okay. My fourth graders named Vincent Van Gogh's sunflowers.
Oh, Vincent Van Gogh. Fourth graders. And I'm celebrating our students and I celebrate our teachers and thank you so very much. Very much, very much.
Thank you. And I have two students from SREC who came in for the video contest. It's Victoria and Barnes and Manuel Manuel.
At this time, thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to see if Lauren Mobius is here in the audience. Wonderful, wonderful. I'd like for you to come to our community. Um, I'd like to share with our community and the board that our state Michigan Attorney General's Office has been providing professional learning as well as speaking to, at each of our buildings, or having representatives at each of our buildings, to talk about internet safety. And at this time, Lisa and Lori are here, I'm sorry, to share with us what's going on.
Thank you so much for inviting us to speak to your students this year. Um, I am part of Attorney General Bill Schutte's Michigan Cyber Safety Initiative program. And I am one of 30 presenters throughout the state of Michigan that teaches free internet safety programs to students in kindergarten through eighth grade and as well as to their parents. We do have a community seminar that we can do as well to kind of keep the parents up to date as well as far as what's going on. Um, my team is actually honored to be presenting in the Southfield School District this year. Uh, we just started making presentations. Uh, we just started making presentations last Monday, and we will finish our presentations this Friday. Um, I really want to go over the presentations that, you know, we do talk to the students about. That way the parents are aware of what we do talk to the students about this year. Um, basically, though, with kindergarten through fifth grade, we do ask the students to ask a trusted adult before they go on the internet. Now, with fourth and fifth grade students, we do ask them to know what the rules are in their house, about where they can and they can't go. Can they have a Facebook profile? Can they have an Instagram account? Is it okay if they're on YouTube? You know, those types of things. Now, with the younger students, we want to make sure that, um, you know, they do actually go to safe places, that they're playing, you know, games that mom and dad say are okay, and that type of thing. Now, once they're on the internet, we want the students to follow our three keeps of internet safety. Our first keep is I keep safe. My personal information, all of it. This is your name, your age, your address, your phone number, your passwords, your plans, the name of your school, and also all of your pictures should be kept safe. Our second keep is I keep away from internet strangers. That means you shouldn't be talking to anyone online that you don't already know in person. And our third keep is I keep telling a parent or trusted adult about anything that makes you feel uncomfortable. And with younger students, like kindergarten through third grade, we actually explain what we mean by feeling uncomfortable, to make sure they, they understand what we mean by that. Now, kindergarten through first grade, we actually do show them a video. Um, it's about Jeremiah's online adventures. And we want to make sure that the students, you know, follow the video and see if Jeremiah follows the rules, you know, about being safe on the internet. Um, then we do briefly touch on bullying with kindergarten through first grade. They do see a Sesame Street video, where unfortunately Big Bird encounters a bully. And we have to see how, how Big Bird handles the bullying. And it goes very well. It's very cute. Um, second and third grade, kind of the same concepts, but we do show them a NutSmart Brain Top video about Annie and her robot friend Moby. And same idea, see if they follow the rules. Second video, though, is a little bit more detailed. We actually make sure that they, uh, actually Annie and Moby teach them how to, um, you know, handle a bully, a cyberbully, keep their computer safe, and also learn how not to be a bully themselves. Fourth and fifth grade is a little bit more serious presentation. We do show five age-appropriate videos that cover the internet predator threat and all forms of bullying. Sixth through eighth grade presentation, our most serious presentation. And here we do talk about the internet predator threat, digital footprinting, inappropriate texting, and all forms of bullying and their consequences. Um, now, some of you, I did hand, there are some handouts out in the foyer. There's, they're orange and purple. Those are some, um, handouts that we typically hand out to parents. One of them is like the eleven sites, you know, that kids are going to after Facebook. I think it's very useful. There's warning signs and safety tips. There's also the Michigan CSI Online Resources page. Both of these, um, handouts are very useful if you actually access them at our website, because then you can actually click on the link. It'll actually show you how to set privacy settings on Facebook, lots of very useful information. Now, in all of our presentations, we do have the teachers fill out a feedback form, so we make sure that we are covering the information that they would like to, you know, that they would like to see. So, and students actually go home with a little online safety contract as a nice reminder about what they learned. So that pretty much sums up what we talked about in our presentations. Um, if you have any questions for me, you know, feel free to talk to me afterward, or I don't know if you have time for that now, so. Um, but, you know, let me know if you have any questions. And thank you so much for letting me come and talk to you. Thank you.
I do have a question. And I know that you're sharing this wonderful information with our children and with our teachers, and it's vital. But this is very, very important information for our parents and families. And will you also be available? Should we just have a parent battling? And you are, or someone from the office can provide the same kind of information again?
Absolutely. And actually, when I was at Adler Elementary, they had, actually were considering having me come in and talk to, like, at a PTA meeting. Even if it wasn't a whole hour, if I shortened it a little bit, by a half hour. Um, I did have a couple of schools that were interested. So. And we could even do it as a whole district, too, as well. So I would, I would love to do that, please.
Thank you so very much. Mary Waw.
At this time, I'm going to turn, uh, and take a departure from my presentation. And I'm returning this over to our board president, Frank Kent.
Well, we would like to welcome Mayor Brenda Lawrence, who is here now.
She didn't hear me.
The Honorable Mayor Brenda Lawrence is here to present the special award for our school who won the contest for the Keep Southfield Clean Initiative. Uh, please welcome Mayor Brenda Lawrence.
You don't look like mayor.
No.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hello to the board members. Um, I'm very excited to be here. Uh, many of you may remember that I actually sat in those seats one day and conducted these meetings. So this is like it's going home. I would like to ask all of those who came with me from the city, Mr. Lukowski, who is our code enforcement director. Ladies and gentlemen, one of the things that I have been very passionate about in the city of Southfield is keeping a clean and safe city. And keeping a clean city does not just happen. We have to work hard, and I'm so proud of the work that my code enforcement, Mr. Lukowski, has done in making sure that he patrols the city, keeps it clean, encourage those who are not doing it well to do it well. And we've actually passed ordinances that if we can't encourage you, we will actually issue a ticket to you. And if that doesn't work, we'll take you to court. Because we are serious about having a clean city. And one of the components of having a clean city is the use of our community. So many times, we'll see, like, a casual dropping of paper somewhere. Um, things are happening, there's not a lot of thought about it. And so when we talk to our children, we say, just like your mom and your dad say, pick up behind yourself, this is your city. This city is your home. And the, the appearance of this city can be enhanced by what you do as, as, uh, children and youth. And so I was so excited when I asked if we could have a program in the city of Southfield, litter-free starts with me. And it was embraced, and we asked the schools to come to the table, and they did. And so we had different schools to, to engage the children on what does litter-free starts with me mean? And so we, we, we wanted that thought process to begin. And my chief of police, and my fire chief, they were with me one hundred percent in saying that we're gonna be with you, Mayor, in this campaign of litter-free starts with me. And so also, we know that we always want to engage the creative part of our children. So we asked them to create a video. And then we judged them, and, and we actually wanted them to know that the prize was money that was donated. And it will go to your school to create a project or something in your building that you can say, because of my creativity and because of my message, I'm able to improve my school and make it better. And so we're very excited to present tonight our three groups of winners. So, chief? Our first winner, is this number one? The number one winner receiving five hundred dollars is Adler Elementary School. Now, I want everyone to know, you can see on the check, Waste Management, who collects the garbage in our city, was extremely excited about partnering with us. And so I want to give our representative, Mr. Conway, the waste manager, a round of applause. Does ever allow us to take a picture with you? Okay. Is it too wide? Can you get it? Is there a spokesperson for Adler's and tell us what we're gonna do with the five hundred dollars?
Well, hello. My name is a createndo. And like, we were thinking about, like, making a memorial, a mural, or beautifying the bathrooms, because, like, we really need to fix them up.
Hi, my name is Devon Mabel. I'm a teacher at Moore's Elementary School. Um, I was honored to participate in the litter-free Sesame Street campaign video contest. Um, long name. Uh, because we really had fun learning the importance of keeping the earth clean and our city clean through, like, video and music. It was really fun to, for all of us to participate in it, really. And thanks for letting us participate.
Hi, my name is Deager Wells. And, um, I was in the second part of the video along with some other of my friends. And, um, one of the interesting things about the video was we didn't have, like, an exact place where to shoot it at first. But then when we started to move around, we found the right place. So, and, um, the first part, they were, like, they were, like, on the sidewalk in, um, by the parking lot where they actually showed Southfield. And then, um, the second half, they were by our garden. So they got a chance to show, like, the trees and, and everything. And we actually had the opportunity to show an example of picking up litter. So, I just figured it's that.
Uh, President Tate, and I just want to acknowledge my teacher for putting this whole program together. She worked really hard with the kids. Uh, and I brought the initiative to her. Uh, she was a little apprehensive at first. But we had the technology in our buildings, and I want to thank the board for approving that. Um, Mr. Cohen took his right hand and just brought the kids together and had them working with the technology. So they took it and ran with it, and they made a wonderful video. So if you have an opportunity to see it, if you need the link, let me know, and I will share that with you all. Um, Cohen, certainly.
We were very, very honored to participate. I definitely was a little apprehensive about it because I was not as familiar with the technology. But thanks to our, um, our approval from the board for getting the technology to us, we really have, the kids and I have really enjoyed working with it, learning the technology, and having a blast, um, writing their own video about litter-free starts with me. They have a little song, and not only do they appreciate it, but the entire school loves the video. And when these kids walk through the school, the little ones go, "Oh, you're in the movie." And they just sing to it, and they know the whole stance, and they love it. And it's really, everyone in the school has really picked up on "Don't Drop the Litter," the song that they, that they made, the litter-free starts with me. And I think my students did a great job writing everything completely by themselves. They did all the research on the iPad themselves. They did the videography and produced everything themselves. I think they did a really great job. So I'm very proud of them, and I'm happy that we got a chance to participate. So thank you for that. And, uh, thank you for the city of Southfield for this opportunity.
So, Mayor Wells, I too would like to thank you. And we're looking forward to watching that video. So we're going to allow the mayor to share the other two presentations. And at the end of her presentation, we're gonna see your video.
Okay, the second place is Grace Letterly Cetera School. Would you please come forward? Proud to defend two, sorry, Grace Letterly, three hundred dollars. You got it, Mom?
Hello. My name is Asia Pine. And for our school, we like to use the money to create, to make flowers and, and make our school bright and beautiful.
Hello, my name is Ait, uh, Tiana McClellan. We had a fun time doing our video. It took, like, hard work, a little, and, um, yeah. We went outside to recycle our papers from our recycling bin to record that. And the smell.
Hi, um, I'm Mrs. Babjanees. And two of my girls, the other two girls couldn't make it tonight. But I just wanted to express my total, um, love and, and just, I'm very, I'm a proud mama right now. Because the kids were encouraged to work collaboratively. All I wanted to do was say, okay, that's a good script. No, work on, you know, a little bit more. And quite honestly, these kids, they really, really worked hard. Not just a little bit, they worked hard with the revisions of their script, trying to work together so that everyone's ideas could be shown in the video. Um, and also, I had no clue how to really make the video look as well as it did. That credit is to Marissa Saraman. She was the one who was able to take our vision and to really do the, the scenes and the slicing and to really make it look professional. Because if it was left up to me, it just... But I do want to thank my girl, Tiana, uh, Asia, Maya, who's not here, and Brian, who really, really, really did a great job. So I'm very proud. And next year, we will get first place. So, it was a nice, you know, thing for them to do and to feel proud about their school. So, we intend to use the money to continue to, um, beautify the area. Thank you.
And our third prize winner, Stevenson Allen.
He's a spokesperson?
Yeah.
My name is Taylor Rice, and I'm in fifth grade at the elementary school. My teacher is Ms. Ray. And, um, this video was fun, uh, we had fun. But, uh, when we see, see people in our class, uh, they'll pay for the stuff, we would say, "Why you stop paying to pick it up?" That was what they were saying in our video. And, we're going to use this money to help, uh, our school with letter stuff.
Hi. I'm Portia Eubank, and these are my fifth graders. And, um, when we first received the information about the Liter Free video, I just told them to act similarly, that they want to. And they created everything. They thought of the rap, the dance, everything, all on their own. The only thing I did was video tape them. So, they can take credit for all of the creativity in our video from Stevenson.
I want to thank all the children, the parents, and the staff who participated in this. You can see, when you, when you really engage the youth, we're going to make a difference. Not only did we tap into their creative skills, we also sent a message in picking up and being aware of what a clean environment, this is their workplace, this is their home during the day. And they, the school system are, the schools are one of the major real estate owners in the city of Southfield. And so, the beautification of the properties here is largely a part of who we are in the city of Southfield. Before I leave the podium, I wanted to bring forward, uh, Mr. Conaway, who was so gracious to partner with us, so he can have a few words.
Thank you very much. Mayor Lawrence, and Brian Conaway, Waste Management of Michigan, Public Safety Representative. Waste Management is excited, Mayor Lawrence, to support the beautiful, the East and South Field cleaning initiative. And it's great to see you excited, to see what they did, the creativity, and how great they felt about it. As you guys know, that when you start to teach young people at such an early age, that they're responsible for their environment, they begin to establish and to develop a sustainable lifestyle throughout the generations. So, I'm very happy to be a part of this, Mayor, and thanks for your vision.
I just wanted to know, I want to give credit to the schools, because collaboration, the schools and the city government, we are joined at the hip. The, uh, accomplishments of our students, the young people in our community, our city government, we're all in this together. And together, we'll make Southfield continue to make it a great city. I have been so blessed to have a very collaborative, really, uh, progressive board to support, uh, partnerships. So, I want to thank you for that, for all the parents. Thank you for everything you do to educate your children, because it doesn't stop when they leave the classroom at the end of the day. If, you are an active part of that. And to the administration, always thank you. I know you're paid to do this job, but if you do it well, if you do it above just what's required in your job description. So, I want to thank you so much for that. Okay. Thank you so very much, Mayor Lawrence. And, and, uh, absolutely. Mayor Lawrence, okay. Okay. Well, I will return to my report. And we will see the video of Adler, uh, very soon. We thought we had your video with us this evening, but we don't. And so, we will make sure that that is available, Adler links on our website as well. Thank you so much, Mayor Lawrence. Thank you for your vision and your partnership. At this time, I'm going to ask, um, our Police Chief, welcome to come to the podium. Um, one of the things that the Police Chief and I, in a recent conversation, shared, um, a moment, talking about this moment in the season of graduation and proms, and we just wanted to make sure that we reminded our parents and our students of using that would create a safe practices and a safe and fun end of the year. Chief.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Wood, and, uh, good evening, board. Good to be here, administration, parents, and children. Um, it's really a pleasure for me to be here this evening, and to see all these bright and energetic, uh, young people that we have here, it really makes me proud, um, as Police Chief to see this. And, uh, so congratulations again to all the winners of, of the mayor's initiative this evening. Um, we have a very strong public safety crew in the city of Southfield. We have Police Chief Riley here, who I work very, very closely with, uh, with partners. And, uh, we also have Jared Kowski, and he walked out, and, um, our emergency manager, uh, Bill Johnson. And, and, and I also want to give a special thanks to, uh, Mayor Lawrence. Mayor Lawrence is a big, big supporter of public safety, and it's because of her support and, um, some of the things that she's done for us, um, in the mayor's office, that we are able to produce and serve, uh, in the city of Southfield. But, there's a couple of things that concern me, and I, and Dr. Wood and I had some conversations, and, uh, we're about to approach the, um, party season, teenage party season. We're going to have, um, sweet sixteen parties, graduation parties, just regular teen get-togethers. And I'm starting to see some things that concern me, uh, with these, with these parties. And it started last year, and even the year before that. And, we're starting to see more and more disruptive and disorderly behaviors at these parties. So, I just wanted to take a quick moment to talk to the parents in the community about this, because really, our children are at risk if we don't take the proper precautions with these parties that we're having for our children. And I know a lot of it's tradition, I know a lot of it is going to happen, and, uh, and that's fine. We understand that. But, just wanted to start off by saying that, number one, if we don't have to have a party, there's nothing wrong with that. Okay? There's, there's a lot of different ways for us to honor milestones with our children. But, if you do, that's not a problem either. And I just want to give you some ideas and suggestions to keep these parties safe for our children. And just to go back, um, last year, we had three or four get-togethers that turned violent. These were teen parties, they were houses, they were at, um, at banquet halls. This year, two or three weeks ago, we had one that turned violent. Now, what concerns me about this is that the parents did everything that they were supposed to do. They took reasonable precautions. It was invitation only, it was, you know, they had chaperones, in some cases, they had security. But, parents would have changed the game with these parties and social media. And what we're seeing is, even the best laid plans with these parties can go sideways. Because, we have invitation only parties, we, we have the security, we do everything we're supposed to do, and then, our children, you know, they're not, not in a malicious way, but they tweet, they post on Facebook. And then, all of a sudden, you have a party of fifty kids that turns into a hundred and fifty or two hundred. In a very, very short period of time. So fast that, that it takes a while for local law enforcement to respond to it. And that's concerning. So, I just want to give you some ideas, if you do have these, these, uh, get-togethers, uh, during the summer, here's some things to think about. Number one, let's keep these, these, um, parties and these get-togethers as small as we can. If you have a teen, a sweet sixteen party, or a graduation party, and you invite a hundred and twenty-five kids, it's probably too many. Okay? Let's try to keep the numbers low, as low as we can. And, number two, once you keep those numbers low, let's stress to all of the children that are coming to these parties, with either invitation only. Let's not tweet about it, let's not post on Facebook, let's not word of mouth type things. So that others who are not a part of your party, who are not a part of the community, show up and cause problems. Number three, let's try to have the appropriate amount of secure, uh, chaperones and parental guidance. You know, have, have your brothers, your uncles, your, if you can hire private security, let's try to do that. Let the police department know the day before your, your party, that you're holding it. Let us know where it is, what time it's going to start, what time it will end. And then, try to keep the parties during the daytime hours, you know, the, the early, afternoon to early evening. Try to avoid the eight PM to twelve PM parties. If you see, once you have the gathering, if you start to see anybody who does not belong, let your chaperones know that they can call the police department as soon as you start to see. Because we're going to follow the beauty around, even though it's a chaperone party, and we don't rain on the parade, but we'll be around. And we may even stop in and say hi to the parents, just let, you know, let you know that we're there. So, people, call if you see some people around, who don't belong there. For those of you who are sending your children out to party, make sure, if you can, make some contact with the adult who is holding that party. Make sure that there are responsible people around. Make sure that they're taking the same precautions at their place that you were taking yours. Stress to our children that if they, if they get invited to an event, and they're at, at all uneasy, let them know there's nothing wrong with not going to that party. Parents, because in a lot of cases, what we're seeing is that the children who get hurt are the ones who are there just to have fun, not doing anything wrong. Our so-called good kids. It's matter of good kids know that it's okay if you feel an uneasy. So, let's remember those things, uh, uh, again, and, and there's some other things too. We're, we're going to be sending out a, a, a letter, uh, from, from the police department to all of the seniors, um, of this year's graduating class, to the parents, to the households, with some other ideas. We have some things on our website, uh, things, uh, things to report. And, and again, I'm, I'm very, very concerned. I want our parents and our community to join us in addressing this problem. We have to be very, very proactive right now. We don't want to wait until we have a party that gets out of control and one of our children gets hurt. We want to take care of it right now. So, again, congratulations to all the children who want to hear us, good to see y'all, it's good to see y'all, the parents. If anybody, um, again, um, if you need any other information, it'll all be on our website. And, uh, you all had a wonderful evening. Thank you, board, thank you, Dr. Wood, and thank you, administration.
Thank you. Okay. Very good. We've had, uh, a lot of good information that has been shared with us about safety. And, one of our top priorities is to keep your children safe in school and at home. So, uh, thank you for involving, in those conversations. So, that's part of my presentation. Uh, last month was, uh, National ASC Awareness Month. And, we had our board meeting on a Tuesday evening during our Easter vacation. And so, our ASC class was not able to come and join us, and we'd like to have them come to the podium at this moment. Their teacher, Mrs. Laquell Robinson, uh, and your students, would you please come? Welcome. Hello. Southfield State Holders. Good evening, Southfield State Holders, board members, administrators, teachers, parents, students. My name is Laquell Robinson, and I'm a teacher of students with autism at Southfield College High School. And, two things, um, as, uh, Dr. Wood mentioned, last month, April, was, um, National Autism Awareness Month. And throughout Southfield College High School, um, we did do a really big campaign, and that wasn't my primary focus from, for coming here, um, but we, I did want to, just to acknowledge that. We did have, uh, three components in which we had the students, the teachers, and the community involved. We had students who participated in an essay and poster contest, in which they, the winners were awarded a $25 gift certificate of their choice. They also watched videos, they answered questions all throughout the month. Teachers participated in online courses in which they were, uh, uh, to gain information about autism, and we had treats for everything. I like to give out little treats, so they were quite excited about that. And, our topper was, in the community, we had the opportunity to visit the local center on 12th Mall and Telegraph, and disseminate information to the community. Um, our media, find, performing arts and media department decorated about 150 grocery bags that were donated from the grocery store. And, we took those to the stores on two occasions, and passed them out to the cus- customers. So, that was quite a success. Oh, let's see, the clicker. Okay. My main focus, here. Again, I just wanted to talk about a program, a groundbreaking program, which is going to be... We look forward to your continued support. A groundbreaking program, which I initiated last year. It's an employability pro, um, employability skills program for students with developmental disabilities. The main focus, because I am, uh, teacher with autism, the main focus is on, um, autism. And it has two components, and you can see, uh, it's self-determination and employability skills. That's what we focus on in our program. Um, the name of our business that we started is called The Charger Laundry, The Charger Laundry Depot. And, The Charger Laundry Depot is not just a laundry service, but it is a catalyst to help students with autism gain employability skills. Now, we have a video, there's a link on there, and I am really, really not sure how I can start that. We created a commercial, and right up under our, okay. Our TV production crew put this video together for us. And this is just a commercial for our Charger Laundry Depot. All students, period, all people, period, need to have employability skills. And we do that through our business, which is called The Charger Laundry Depot. The students within the program, they are taught employment soft skills where they It's an employability skills program for students with developmental disabilities. The main focus, because I am a teacher with autism, the main focus is on autism. And it has two components, and you can see, self-determination and employability skills. That's what we focus on in our program. The name of our business that we started is called The Charger Laundry Depot. And The Charger Laundry Depot is not just a laundry service, but it is a catalyst to help students with autism gain employability skills. Now, we have a video, there's a link on there, and I am really, really not sure how I can start that. We created a commercial, and right up under our... Okay. Our TV production crew put this video together for us, and this is just a commercial for our Charger Laundry Depot. All students, period, all people, period, need to have employability skills. And we do that through our business, which is called The Charger Laundry Depot. The students within the program, they are taught employment soft skills, where they learn the basics of being a good employee. How to interact with their coworkers, the importance of arriving to work on time, completing job tasks independently, problem-solving on the job, the same thing that anyone else would do when they go to work. We also look at self-determination, not only in the program, not in the employability skills program, but it also addresses self-determination. And what that is, is teaching the students with disabilities how to advocate for themselves. The only difference is, is that when you have a disability, an autism, you kind of get confused about the appropriate way to address matters, difficult situations, or how to advocate for yourself. They sometimes exhibit a lot of behaviors that people in the world don't understand, so we promote self-determination. They also focus on technology, and we do use Microsoft Windows tablets, where the students create documents and they invoice things for orders. We have served the Southfield Laser Charger Football Team, Volleyball Team, Swim Team, and Basketball Team, and anyone else who comes in and needs our service, and the students in laundry, all the cleaning, washing, folding, ironing, the goals of those orders.
We, once you realize the things that these students go through, we'd like to solicit the support of all schools that have lost and found. What we would do is that we would invoice them or inventory their items, that they would bring it to the school, we would then clean them, and we would return it to them. And that lost and found piece is a big piece, because each school in our district has lost and found, and what it would do, it enables to help families who are unfortunate, disabled, have losses, it's kind of giving back to the community. The students leaving here need to have some employable skills. They need to be able to step out after the twelfth grade and be able to give something back.
They should use the box to wash their clothes. So, anytime you're close or sleepy, or something, you guys can come and save them.
You're doing a good job. Again, we've been working with students who work for the program. Again, we've been active for about a year. While the program was created, it was a mission, and then I had an opportunity to where I could write a grant, and I was awarded, two years in a row, almost three thousand dollars from the Autism Society of America. Those funds went towards purchasing, so far, we have three windows services that we purchased and accessories to go with them. And it also helps sustain our business, laundry products, and things like that. Okay, another portion of the program is self-determination, and really, that video basically spoke for itself. Self-determination is based on five principles, and those principles are freedom, authority, support, responsibility, and confirmation. And having all of these characteristics gives individuals with developmental disabilities the ability and opportunity to make choices and decisions. It gives them the ability to have, the opportunity to exercise control over services, supports, and other assistances in communities, to have the authority to control resources and obtain needed services, to have the opportunity to participate in and contribute to their communities, as well as support, including financial, to advocate, develop leadership skills, become trained as self-advocate, and participate in coalitions and policymaking. So, it's really just skills for the whole child, and it actually doesn't start in high school. This is something that should start early on, with any person, actually. So, this is just one component of our program, and then, we focus on our employability skills. The main thing is, we focus on employability soft skills, and those are skills which any individual should have who has a job. How to dress appropriately, how to obtain and maintain a job, how to interact with your coworkers, how to problem-solve on a job. Our program also, the vision of the program is four phases. We're now in phase two, and those are some of the students that are in the program for children with autism at Southfield Laser. We started this program again in March of two thousand and thirteen. We are in phase two right now of the program, where the students actually get the opportunity to work in the Charger Laundry, where they do create invoices, and they do billing, and inventory, and it's really, it's quite an arduous job, actually. Sometimes I feel bad for them, because they just work so hard in the laundry. We're now, well, beginning of next school year, we're going to start with phase three, where we're going to try to solicit businesses in the community, so that the children can actually go out and work, as opposed to working inside of the school. The program goals are to apply communication, academics, and technology in work environments, teach self-management skills, cooperative work skills, enhance skills in career advancement, career awareness, and of course, managing a healthy lifestyle. And all of these things is our intent to help our students with disabilities to become independent as adults. We are working in collaboration with students from our cognitively impaired program at Southfield Laser, as well as students that are in the student congress program at Southfield Laser. All of the students are quite diligent in their work, they're accurate, they're lively, and they just keep everything just going and excited, and definitely, it has revived me as a teacher, an eighteen-year teacher. So, I'm very excited about the program and what we're going to do. These are some of our community connections outside of servicing the athletic department at Southfield Laser. We also service roller construction, where we wash their shirts, and in the video, there was footage of the students actually servicing or folding towels that we washed for a charmel salon, and we do that on a weekly basis. We also work in collaboration with the Charger Garden, which the students do attend every week, participate in activities, and we wash the gloves and the aprons. Some of the products and services that we offer are just light washing, drying, light ironing, and laundry cleaning solutions, and we also do gourmet coffee sales. This is a little, some images from our grand opening that we had. We actually had a grand opening on April eleventh, and then, we did a grand reopening, where we had the media come out, and we were there in five different newspapers for this. And this actually happened on the day of our grand opening. One of the teachers had a little accident, unfortunately, with one of our students who was just not having a good day, and he took his coffee and he threw it on him, and he was in such a panic. And I said, "Oh, don't worry about it, we'll clean that shirt for you." They were having a program that night. So, he took off his shirt, and those are the before and after pictures. The students were cleaning the shirt, we washed it, dried it, and ironed it, and fortunately, our music teacher was able to wear this nice white shirt that's over in that meeting. So, again, these are just some of the students who participate in the program. And I just want to thank the board and the administrators for allowing us to be here. I have, well, the board members, there are, I have a list of all the links of the list. A few articles on there. So, there is a much better sheet inside the package, but you can, this is the Southfield Laser website, and we do have a link on the page that talks about our service. And... Oh, yes, I'm sorry. My apologies. These are some of our students. Mrs. Petty, Mrs. Fryback, Mrs. Spencer, Maya, Angela, this is our tie person, the mini-me I bought her the camera when she was in sixth grade. Yeah, yeah. I just take pictures. So, we just look forward to continuing our program and hoping to have the support from the board and administrators, so that we can get bigger and get our names out there, because there really is a good, again, it's a good opportunity from the board. A early start for them. Thank you. Tremendous opportunities we have for our students in the district and the hard work.
Okay, very good. Okay, dear board and community, we have a lot to share this evening. A lot to share. At this time, I'm going to conclude my report by asking Elise to come to the front end of the podium, and we have a communication update for the board and information about self-clean. And I want to share a little bit as Elise comes to the podium. As you know, we have several interns in our district, they work very hard, and they're getting tremendous exposure experiences, and she comes every day working with Mrs. Robinson, our communications coordinator and director, and Elise is here to shine and to share in her essence, okay?
Hi, I'd like to thank everybody for being here tonight, the board, administration, interim superintendent Linda Wood. And as mentioned, I work under Jessica Robinson, PR and marketing manager of Southfield Public Schools. And I'd like to share a little bit about some of the work that we've been doing over the past few months from the campaign. So, in January, we launched a campaign. It was highly integrated. We created original radio and television commercials, and they featured some of our students, and they also focused on the highlights of our fifteen specialty schools. As you can see, it was highly integrated, we had a lot of different channels that we used, including social media, television, radio, and... We also created some radio ads. It featured the unique things of Southfield Public Schools and some of the benefits our students have, and this ad actually played on praise one oh two point seven of them, as well as kiss one oh five point nine of them. And this is that...
Mom, you're... Amy. Hey, Michelle, what's Dana doing?
Oh, she's naming all the career choices she can be exposed to when we enroll her in Southfield Public Schools.
Where did she get that idea?
Wow, Southfield Public Schools has sixteen schools that choose from each with a specific focus.
Really?
Yes, they have engineering, medical, and fine arts academies for high schools, STEM programs for middle school, and foreign language, technology, and science-focused schools for elementary.
Wow, that's impressive.
I know. Did you know that Southfield students won more than thirteen million dollars in college scholarships last year? And their examination high school, named by Newsweek, is one of the best schools in America. It's also the top-performing school in Oakwood County, according to the state of Michigan.
Sounds like you made a good choice.
Well, Dana thinks so.
A filmmaker's life is business.
See how the future is bright for your child at Southfield Public Schools. Call two four eight seven four six seven six zero one.
As part of our campaign, we also had a bi-weekly ad in the Southfield Sun. It was the ad shown right there that highlighted, again, the features of all, each of our fifteen specialty schools. And we also created a television ad, and it was shot on-site, and it featured some of our own students, and that ad was shown on TV sixteen, our homepage, as well as YouTube, our YouTube channel. It now holds four hundred and eighty-one views on YouTube, and it can still be viewed there if our students are watching it. Part of our campaign was also social media. Every day during the month of February, we had a fun fact about each of our specialty schools and about our district, and this received a lot of involvement from the SPS community. Teachers, students, and parents all showed a lot of support and SPS pride during the segment of the campaign. This shows some of our reach that we got with these advertisements. I'd like to direct your attention to our highest channel, which was Radio One, which had two hundred and ninety-six thousand people, listeners, and our research brought us to an estimated total reach of nearly a hundred and eighty-two thousand people during this campaign for these advertisements. For current advertisements, we are about to have this ad show up in the Southfield Sun, and it shows the benefits of the Southfield kindergarten program, and it'll be showing in the Southfield Sun on our homepage as well as social media. We'll also be relaunching that advertisement played earlier on the radio. It'll be playing for two weeks, starting May nineteenth, and it'll be on one oh two point seven. We've also had some media hits. Many of them were mentioned earlier. The Southfield Sun covered interim superintendent Dr. Linda Wood, and some of her ideas to help, some of her hope for SPS, such as better access to technology for students, and also the Daily Tribune at CBS Detroit, Observer, and Eccentric, all covered AstraX zombie attack video mentioned earlier. And the Southfield Sun also covered Southfield Laser High School's program for students with autism spectrum disorders. They had a campaign last month for Autism Awareness Month, where they passed out decorated bags at the local prober. And recent events, Coffee and Conversation was last Saturday with interim superintendent Dr. Linda Wood, and she addressed new language arts instructional materials for grade K through twelve, such as ebooks. And I'd also like to take this moment to thank everybody that was involved with our Keep Southfield Clean Initiative. It turned out to be a great success, and we had hundreds of people come and help with it, and we wouldn't have been able to do any of it without our volunteers and our partners. And also, we have a video to share on the Keep Southfield Clean Initiative. It was recorded to show what happened that day. It was recorded to show what happened that day. And that concludes my report. I just wanted to thank you all again for your time and have a great night.
Thank you. Well, I thank you all for your listening and all of the sharing as it relates to the many tremendous things going on in our district. And board, at this time, I conclude my report. And I turn it over to Kate Savage, who is here for Mrs. Debbie Trent, who is not well this evening. Let me answer, this items are under the action items and the informational items. Other than that, there's something specifically we have to watch you. Thank you.
Good evening. The human resources report is covered under the consent agenda.
Good evening. I have two areas that you will hear about this evening. First, I would like to invite Mr. George Chat, who is our Director of Curriculum and Instruction. We want to provide you with an update about our summer programming. So we'll begin first with Mr. Chat.
Good evening to members of Board of Education, Superintendent, Administration, and the community. Division of Construction, just wanted to give a brief reminder and update that 2014 summer school programming for high school credit recovery and select K through 5, K enrichment programs will begin taking place Monday, June 23rd and going through July 25th, 2014 for K8 summer school. And for the high school program for credit recovery will go from June 25th through July 31st, 2014. All programs will be held at Southfield High School. We will have registration... We'll have registration on Monday, June 16th, Tuesday, June 17th, and Wednesday, June 18th at Michigan Forest Credit Union. All days will be from 12:00 PM to 6:00 PM. Of course, high school credit recovery courses are $225 per one semester course. Students will have the option to take up to one and a half credits over three class periods during each day. Summer school runs Monday through Thursday. There are no classes on Friday. If you have any questions at all, we have a program hotline. Please call area code 248-746-4326 or contact us by email at the SPS Program hotline, You can also access brochures for K, as well as high school programming at southfield.k12.mi.us backslash summer 2014.
Thank you, Mr. Chat. And next, I'd like to invite Ms. Elise Collier to the podium. She is our supervisor of secondary intervention programming. And as you know, this year, we put a new program in place. You know, it's important that all of our children have every opportunity to be in school each day. And sometimes our children make choices that create opportunities for them to have to remain at home. However, this year, we wanted to put something in place where we could create opportunities for them to remain in school with us each day. So Ms. Collier is here today to share with you an update and some data about our program that occurred over this school year.
Thank you, Marcia. Good evening, board and cabinet. Just wanted to bring you up to speed. We came before you at the beginning of the school year and had to share with you in a nutshell how this, what this program would look like. Last year, the suspension rate for students in high school was somewhat high and we were committed to making a difference. And so one of the things we did was we looked at those small infractions that were resulting in students having to be suspended, ranging from attendance, dress code, cell phone usage, electronic devices. And so we put a plan in place, students that committed those minor infractions were recommended for the Saturday School Intervention Program. With that, they were required to come for two consecutive Saturdays. That wasn't easy trying to get high school students up for Saturday, to serve Saturday detention. But as Marcia just mentioned, it has proven to be very effective in our district. And I will go through and just share with you what the suspension report looks like. If you take a look at the 2012-2013 number, you'll see the suspension rate for Southfield High School, SRAK, Laser, as well as University High. You can see for Southfield High School, as well as SRAK and University High, that the suspension report, suspension rate did decrease. With that, we take a look at Southfield Laser, when I drill down to the numbers and there's a slight increase in Southfield Laser's number, um, number. When I drilled down, I was able to see that most of their suspensions came from ninth graders. Ninth graders are making a transition into high school. Often times it's difficult for them to make the adjustment about dress code, getting acclimated to getting to class on time. However, you'll see in our next slide, where if you take a look at our suspension reports, you'll see that in September, October, and November, the numbers were high. But as, as we progressed throughout the school year, the numbers dropped significantly in our district that to the building principals, the school council, the teachers talking to the students about making positive choices. The numbers for May are all the way down to 114 students that were in attendance for the last two weeks. And so this program has proven to be very effective. The parents are, more importantly, are very pleased that rather than just suspending students for committing minor infractions, the district has offered an alternative to just suspending our students. We all know that research has strong support that students that are in class in front of teachers receiving direct instruction perform better academically. So to date, we have received positive feedback. We still have some work to do. I am confident that this time next year, our suspension rate will be a lot less than we see this year. As this is a new program, we were committed to taking a look at the data to see what type of improvements can be made. And we're working with the building principals to make sure we implement just some different strategy, strategies and improvements for next year.
Questions? Thank you, Ms. Collier.
Thank you.
That concludes my report this evening.
Thank you very much. Now we'll proceed to the action items.
Oh, Bussie, I think you're part of it. We have a report from Bussie. I was there.
I will list through this. Board members, you have it in your folders. There, this is the director's report, finance report, and some additional information from Policy Council in general. 226 are currently enrolled, 83 are waiting, are on the waiting list. And in terms of drops, there have been 53. Our average daily attendance is at 81.79 percent. Ms. Hill believes that has to do with our data management system still recording some of the days where the kids aren't there, like spring break. The C A, C S P, or the Child Adult Care Food Program, meals served, 1,997 breakfasts, 2,539 lunch, and 1,898 snacks. The National Head Start Conference in Long Beach was a success and a lot of great information was shared and learned by all attendees. Internal review team visited Bussie on April 24th. A detailed report is located in the Bussie office and also in your email inbox. Keep Southfield Clean Project, as the mayor has alluded, was a huge success. At Bussie, they had 45 volunteers who helped in sprucing up the ground. I'd like to highlight Tim Horton provided coffee and donuts. Big B provided hot chocolate. And Home Depot provided a team of 12 volunteers, raked shovelled bags. They will be partnering with Bussie and helping to plant the garden. Home Depot is also looking into refurbishing the benches and the picnic tables on the playground. There is a pilot GSRP program this summer where the kids who are in that program will be tending that garden that Home Depot was helping them with. Teacher Appreciation Week, May 5th through the 9th. Jimmy John's donated sandwiches, Nestle cookies provided treats. Mrs. Hill donated cookies. Frank from All Graphics donated six gift cards. Bolt Corporation donated $100 to purchase gift cards for staff. And Valerie Butler provided massages. The highlighted, a couple of events I think board members would be interested in on tomorrow, Ms. Sherri, Ms. Sherri Jones, the, the, I don't have that particular note in front of me. The Family and Community Partnerships Manager will receive an award tomorrow at the Partnership Breakfast at Regency Manor. And she's the, even Ms. Hill said, she's the sole reason why they have such a strong partnership today. Like, all these people, Big B, Home Depot, Tim Hortons, and the rest are from Ms. Jones' hard, hard work. May 29th is a special visit from the President of High School, Dr. Cheryl, Dr. Cheryl Cole. And May 30th is the family picnic last day for school, for children at Bussie. You see that our program operation expenses are $1.2 million? The sub total of the federal, so that's all rounded in, is $1,000,002. The 20% local match from the school district is at $309,000. And we've spent 71% of the overall budget, or $881,000. And there's a Excel spreadsheet also in your inbox. Same retreat, silver light. Okay. And last but not least, I just wanted to mention that President Obama has an initiative at whitehouse.gov/issues/education/earlychildhood, where he, I guess, gleaning, or his team, is gleaning information on what people, regular folks, want for early childhood education in this country. And I hope I haven't forgotten anything. Thank you.
I would like to remind the audience, though, that GSRP stands for Great Start Ready This Program, which is operating in Southfield as a, as a part of the program. Students who go half-day go to the Head Start Program, which is federally funded. And those students who go all-day go in the afternoon as well to the Great Start Ready This Program. And it takes some effort to arrange the curriculum so that children in the afternoon are not repeating what they've done in the morning. It's a very structured, skilled program presented to our students so that when they enter kindergarten, they are ready. I'd like someone to, I want a motion to open and approve the consent agenda. Someone here? Did someone open it?
Yes, yes, okay.
If there's still comments, the secretary, please call the roll for the vote. Ms. Buchanan?
Ms. Cat?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. I'd like someone to open report number 5275, Apple iPad and Hewlett Packard Laptop Purchase for Title II Program.
I move to be open report 5275.
Thank you. Dr. Woods, can you provide...
Emily Blaine, Mr. Press Cap will be providing the report.
Good evening, board members, staff members at S P. As an ongoing effort to develop new PE opportunities, both in content and ways to access them, we're continually looking at technology and technology purchases to, again, enhance the opportunities for staff to access and create professional development. With that being said, we are looking to, or would like to purchase, three iPad cards, one for SRAK, one for Southfield Laser, and one for Southfield High School to be used for staff members to partake in the overall professional development opportunities. We'd also like to purchase a laptop card for the University High School for the same reasons. If you have any questions.
Any questions? Call for a vote. Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Cat?
Yes.
Ms. Buchanan?
Yes.
My thought, yes. You have them.
Thank you very much. I'd like someone to open the report number 5276, Apple iPad and Hewlett Packard Purchase Laptop Purchase for CTE Program.
I move to be open report 5276.
Dr. Woods?
Again, we're looking to purchase three iPad cards for the CTE programs. One for the CAD and marking programs at Southfield High and one for the marking program at Southfield Laser. We'd also like to purchase a laptop card for the business management and administration program at SRAK. And again, these are, these are devices just for students to be able to access content, create content that, that is part of the CTE program.
Any questions?
Just for the community to leave, um, from the CTE.
CTE is career and technical education. And it's meant to, again, provide students with an opportunity to develop career-oriented skills, both in technology.
Do we have a call to approve the report 5275?
Ms. Poole?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Cat?
Yes.
Ms. Buchanan?
Yes.
My thought, yes. You have them.
I'd like your motion to open report number 5277, Extension of the Intergovernmental Agreement Between Southfield Public Schools and Berkeley School District for the Partial Leaves of Kennedy School.
I move to be open report 5277.
Certainly.
Support.
As we know, that in, oh, in 2007, we closed Kennedy. And then later that year, we opened Kennedy in a partnership with Berkeley School. And so, in that amount of time, we've had a successful program and we're recommending that we extend the intergovernmental agreement.
Any questions?
Any other question? Definitely a, um, in, in, maybe an interjection, but I'd like to see a study session, maybe in the fall, early fall, where someone from that district, as well as, you know, it would be a public meeting, so community members would be more than welcome to be there. But I think it would be important to kind of have a conversation about the program.
Sure. I'll come up with an addendum with that, including phone services, we know that there's a lot of, are we paying the phone bill or are they paying the phone bill?
They're paying the phone bill. What do you want to discuss that on?
Um, one of the things that, that they had had, they're in one of our buildings, our phone system is in that building already. They'd had hot lines or plain old telephone system lines in there for years that they'd been paying on. One thing that we had approached them with, or we kind of come to a mutual agreement of, you know, is there some way that we could enhance that program or help you guys to, to make things a little bit, function a little bit easier? So the addendum to the lease was, we would provide phones in the classrooms and we would allow them to use our phone system for that $250 a month. It doesn't add any additional cost to, to us other than putting the phones over there. We had spare phones, we didn't have to purchase any. So it's...
Madam Secretary, please call the roll for the vote.
Sure. Ms. Buchanan?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Cat?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
It should be improvements from the community members that I spoke with and they're, they're at a good place and hopefully will continue. I'm going to vote yes today.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
And Ms. Poole?
Yes.
My thought, yes. Yes.
Thank you very much. Could I have someone else please open report number 5278?
I move to be open report 5278.
Southfield and Southfield Laser High School KAV rehabilitation business. Okay. Do I hear any questions? Do I hear any questions? Madam Secretary, please call the roll for the vote. Oh, you wish to provide information?
I will reiterate some of the information that's in the action items. This is Trum at one of our former meetings, provided the board with insight about the paving projects that were necessary for Southfield Latrobe and Southfield High in the district. And I just wish to support that and to note that it is something that we do wish to recommend. And she's not here this evening to go into further detail, but it is something we recommend. Thank you. In fact, I know a parent at the last meeting, and she mentioned something that we could, I know it's not included in this, but if we could create a flag wall for the kids who cross the street from Bussie, could have a place for, like that in the street, and if we could just add that to our next contact. Oh, yeah. That was something that we've discussed, and I've discussed it with a parent, and we're all very concerned that there is some work that needs to be done to make that walkway better for our children crossing the walkway. Okay, thank you. Is that a partnership with the city? Would that be a city-school collaboration? We need a collaboration for sure.
Hold for the vote, please.
Sure.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Cat? Yes. Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Paul?
Yes.
Ms. Buchanan?
Yes.
Myself, yes. unanimous. Thank you. I want a motion to open and approve report fifty-two seventy-eight.
I move that we open report number fifty-two seventy-nine.
Support.
Thank you. Seventy-nine would be better. Well, that's a second reading and approval. Any comments? Call for the vote, please.
Okay. Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Paul?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Cat?
Yes.
Ms. Buchanan?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you. I need a motion to open and approve report fifty-two eighty, Open School Board Election Resolution, second reading.
I move we open report number fifty-two eighty, support.
Any questions, comments?
Let me just explain to the public exactly what this report is.
Ms. Buchanan wants to explain to the community. Open.
Well, the Oakland I F D requires that we each district select somebody to represent the board in their I F D elections. And for our purposes, we selected trustee Lance Williams to represent us to the I F D for the special election.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? No? Call for the vote.
Ms. Buchanan?
Yes.
Ms. Cat?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Paul?
Yes.
Any others in the end?
Ms. Smith? Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, I'd like a motion to open report fifty-two eighty-one.
I move that we open report number fifty-two eighty-one, support.
This is a report for web filter service.
Hello again. This device is required by all school districts in accordance with the Children's Internet Protection Act. It requires districts to filter content that is delivered to children or access to the internet to mitigate any access to inappropriate content. In the past, Southfield has had a device called Barracuda Web Filter. We're able to, in partnership with a visit open schools, have put out a couple of years ago, secure a significant decrease in costs. We're recommending that we go with an iBoss web filter with a subscription that'll run for five years to save approximately seven thousand dollars per year.
Any questions, comments? Call for the vote.
Okay. Ms. Cat?
Yes.
Ms. Buchanan?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Paul?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Unanimous.
All right, items fifty-two eighty-two dot fifty-two eighty-five do not require board action. Should we do those all together, or?
There's nothing.
Nothing to do. There's no action. Fifty-two eighty-two is board purchases from five thousand to twenty-two thousand. Fifty-two eighty-three is donations that were provided to Southfield Public Schools. Plant Moran and Plant Moran Creasoc donated seven hundred twenty-five dollars to cover transportation and expenses for students to attend the Girls Are It Conference held at the University of Michigan Dearborn on March nineteenth, two thousand fourteen. The Celebrity Readers Tea, to be held on May twenty-one, two thousand fourteen, has been funded by the following donations. Michigan First Credit Union donated venue and food estimated at eight hundred dollars. Kensington Church donated two hundred dollars. Janice Cardwell from the University of Phoenix donated one hundred dollars. The annual Celebrity Readers Tea event honors over two hundred people in the community who give up their time to read during the entire school year to children in the Southfield Public Elementary and K-2A School and the Bussie Head Start Center. Let me see. Eighty-four is a bill summary. And eighty-five is the Southfield Latrobe Pool Cleaning and Regrouting. It was emptied in order to repair damaged valves. An inspection of the empty pool showed newer areas where the ground has completely deteriorated and rusted. Coats were obtained to acid wash the existing tile and completely regrout the pool. There's a list of expenses here, if anybody wants to see it. It's in your list. Advanced Pool of O'Nea, Michigan, was issued a purchase order to reform north. The project is expected to be completed by May second, two thousand fourteen. Must be completed. The pool will then be refilled and treated with chlorine. The pool is expected to be ready for operation May twelfth, two thousand fourteen. I believe that was yesterday. Ms. Clinton? Board matters. You have any board matters? I beg your pardon? Oh, public participation. No public participation. I haven't seen any candidates. Thank you. Do you have anything to add?
No.
Ms. Buchanan?
No, I don't see any.
No?
If I do, on Thursday, April twenty-fourth, I attend the state public school district concert, Caldeck, Southfield Auditorium, to try to unite and we sing. And I tell you, this included the elementary, middle school, and high school students. And they were absolutely phenomenal. And it's amazing how much talent we have in our school history. And also a gratitude to the teachers who bring out that talent among students, you know. And there are two students that stood out, high school students. And I tell you, if you close your eyes, you could think of Oprah from the Little Teen fight. If you close your eyes again, you thought you were Mahalia Jackson. They were just that fantastic, really. I enjoyed the concert, and they have a lot, we got a lot of comments received afterwards. And you missed a treat. So I just want to say kudos to the students, the great talent, and the teachers who brought out in a homeless house. Wonderful concert.
On Saturday, May seventeenth, my Southfield member Robinson will be, yeah, the seventeenth, spending a wonderful study Saturday with professional development with the Michigan Association of School Boards on focusing on feedback. And other than that, happy belated Mother's Day to all of you, and.
Yes, the Southfield School Board is in the process of hearing candidates for the superintendent. We heard Mr. Edmondson yesterday, Ms. Alhanna?
Alhanna.
Dr. Hemmera. Yesterday was Dr. Edmondson, tomorrow's Dr. Hemmera, and then on Thursday is Dr. Wood. And then we will make a decision. So that's our big review. And they are going through a rather grueling experience because it starts at eight o'clock in the morning, and it ends at eight o'clock at night. They are talking to administrators, teachers, everybody in groups. Everybody is invited to come. The teachers come after school. The general public is invited at six o'clock. We welcome you to be there and speak to our prospective employees. And that's all I have. I thank you very much for coming. We have future meetings on May twentieth as a study session, curriculum update. May twenty-two at six o'clock, special board meeting with MLI, Michigan Leadership Institute. That's the, that's our search team. May twenty-seventh, special board meeting on the budget. May twenty-seventh at six-thirty, student hearings. June three at six o'clock, student hearings. June five at six o'clock, a study session on high school programs. June ten, regular board meetings. June seventeen at six o'clock, study session, K through eight programs. And?
Well, one thing that's missing from here is June first, graduation.
Oh, my God, it is missing.
June first is graduation.
Yes. Until, until it's over, about five in the evening. Or six o'clock. It's an all-day event, correct?
Love it, though. Definitely, yes.
Anybody here going to be at graduation? Yeah. Great. Meeting's adjourned.